I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take note of the emergency exits there and I think back there. Okay. I need a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk's report?
Thank you, Mr. Joslin. We can do a consent agenda for 2A and 2B. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting held September 8th, 2020, and be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the special meeting held September 30th, 2020.
I need a motion on the clerk's report.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time of the comment, at this time the board will recognize any speakers wishing to address the board regarding agenda items only. Thank you. We will now have the opportunity to recognize our Students of the Month for the first time in person since March 10th. And we'll begin with the elementary school and Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Joslin. It's nice to be back in person.
Yes.
We have a very special young lady we're going to recognize for our first student of the month for the 2020-2021 school year. But first, I'd like to ask a teacher if I'm joining this math class? All right. Kaylee Schadenhavel. Kaylee, come on up. Kaylee was chosen to Students of the Month because she always has a positive and happy attitude. Kaylee has always shown leadership qualities in the classroom during her time at Hampton Bay's Elementary School. You can tell that she loves school and learning and is always participating and actively engaged in what class is learning about. Kaylee strongly recommends that everybody takes a full trip to Hershey Park. She loves the rides, Hershey in the Dark, and Shreveville. We had a strong disagreement because my favorite part is always make your own Hershey Park. Kaylee loves Broadway plays, Hamilton being her favorite, and is working on her own version of Hamilton. Kaylee loves the book Riding Freedom by Pam Munoz Bryan. Charlotte, the main character, has a way with horses, wants to spend her life training and riding that on a ranch of her own. Kaylee loves horses and wants to take riding lessons one day. Kaylee does have some big plans for the future. She wants to graduate high school, graduate college, and then eventually be the first female president of the United States of America. Kaylee was quick to point out to me, though, Mr. Meyer, somebody might beat me to it so I might be the second. We are proud to have nominated Kaylee for September Student of the Month. There is no one who deserves it more. Congratulations, Kaylee.
Congratulations, Kaylee. Next up, we have Mr. Shug from the middle school.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Good evening. Tonight I have the distinct pleasure to introduce our first Hampton Bay's Middle School Student of the Month for the 2020-2021 school year, 8th grader Marcello Cello Messina. Cello? Cello was nominated by his teachers on the Big 12 team. His teachers had the following to say about him. Marcello has set an excellent example for how to approach learning in the hybrid world. He is very helpful around the classroom when we are present in school, but even more so when the class goes virtual for remote learning. He is anxious to participate and helpful to others around him. But let me tell you a little bit more about Cello. When I arrived in the office for our interview, one of my favorite things to do, interview Students of the Month, Cello was seated wearing a baseball cap, the baseball cap upon his head as part of a community service fundraiser we do each year at the middle school called Heavenly Hats. It's an organization that provides hats for cancer patients. So as we walked into the office for our interview, I couldn't help but ask about it, the hat on Cello's head. It turns out, this cap once belonged to Cello's grandfather, Papa, or Mr. Anthony Messina. Mr. Messina had recently passed away, this summer in fact. Cello shared a home with his grandfather who would often say to him when passing the roadside marquee in front of the school, "Wouldn't it be wonderful to see your name on that board someday?" Well, Cello, tomorrow is that day. And we can be sure a proud Papa is smiling on you right now. Cello's favorite class this year is English with Ms. Fitzgibbon, where he recently finished writing this year's entry to the Patriots Pen Essay Contest sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. A quote-second favorite subject is social studies with Mr. Livano, where Cello enjoys learning about historical storytelling. Outside of the regular school day, Cello has been an active member of our HBMS Drama Club. He has been a part of productions that include Mary Poppins, where he was in the ensemble, Music Man, where he was in the quartet, and most recently, he was prepared to play the role of Brian in last year's production of High School Musical: Junior. In fact, Cello and the HBMS Drama Club members are so dedicated to their craft, they did not let anything slow them down as they recorded the performance on Zoom. When not in school, Cello stays involved in theater, most recently preparing to play Donkey in Shrek the Musical as part of the West Hampton Beach Theater Group. Cello is also an artist. He loves to draw and he loves to paint. His favorite medium is pencil drawing, but he also dabbles in using paint markers and thoroughly enjoys sketching characters for movies and television. During the school closure last year, when not in school, Cello painted rocks to wait to make productive and positive use of his time. Cello is an aspiring author and/or singer and would love to someday reside in New York City, enjoying times he's explored Times Square and Brooklyn. In terms of recommended reading, Cello prefers biographies so he can learn about people's stories and their lives and obstacles they've overcome to accomplish great things. When I asked Cello to share advice he would give to a new student at HBMS, he gave a standard, "Work hard, try your best, and stay focused." Upon further reflection, however, Cello added that it's also important to embrace that we are living history right now. And one of the things he's learned from all of this is that we should never take the time we have with people for granted. When I asked Cello if there was anything else I didn't ask him that he felt he should share, he told me that he was caught off guard by this recognition, thinking this was an award for students who had the highest grades. He didn't realize this was for ordinary kids like him. Cello, you're not an ordinary kid. You're a special adolescent with a great story, and you are by no means ordinary. In fact, you are quite extraordinary. You reminded me that our faculty's focus this year is to listen closely to our students' stories. And quite unexpectedly, but not surprisingly, Cello's story, which started with a boy wearing a hat to middle school, revealed so much more. Congratulations, Cello. There's no doubt how proud Mr. Anthony Papa Messina is of you, as well as we all here at Hampton Bay's schools. Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Congratulations again, Cello. Next up, we have Dr. Greenberg for the high school.
What a wonderful young man. Can't wait for you to get to high school. I do wonder whether acting schools, they have an exercise about voice projection with masks on. If that's the case, we're all acing it. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Clemenson, the Board of Education, students, families, and fellow colleagues. It is my honor and my pleasure to introduce Katrina Ann Reich as a Student of the Month. Unfortunately, Mr. Richard pulled his back and couldn't be here. He couldn't have made my job any easier presenting this young lady. Katrina's resume is so impressive. Her dedication to the field of academia is laser-focused, and Katrina is a role model for little girls who aspire not only to become scientists, but also to pursue their other passion, music. It is still early, but Katrina is planning on applying to Cornell, Brown, and Boston University, which are just some of the college choices. Choices will be a common theme, as with her impressive SAT score and an outstanding GPA, Katrina could take her time in deciding on which college to attend to pursue her major in neuroscience and minor music. Mr. Richard and I believe that this young lady is poised to change the world. There is still her senior year, and she hit the ground running. Katrina is taking five AP classes this year, and at the end of the year, she will have 10 AP classes under her belt. Katrina is also part of our science research program, and her research is in cochlear implants. Her mentor, Dr. Stupak at NYU, and more recently, Katrina has been involved in procuring a form for kids with ear implants, including understanding of how they're dealing with COVID. But it is her music department led by Ms. Halsey that has nominated Katrina for the Student of the Month Award. Ms. Halsey felt that Katrina is Hampton Bay's top musician. Among her many accomplishments, Ms. Halsey stated that Katrina participates in the New York State School Music Association on marimba, voice, and piano, and receives the highest recommendations consistently. At the high school, Katrina is in all of the Hampton Bay's ensembles and musicals. Katrina has also performed in Carnegie Hall on three separate occasions and has recently been awarded a status of a Peace Caller with honors. We're so proud of you and looking forward to your accomplishments. On the behalf of the music department, Mr. Richard and myself, congratulations once again.
Congratulations, Katrina. At this time, we'd like to invite Kaylee to come up and give us a snowball bump. At this time, we'll take a brief break so the families can take photos of their Student of the Month students, children. And afterward, welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, or you may go home and enjoy the evening with your Student of the Month. Thank you. Jen? Okay, at this time, we will begin with presentations and start with Superintendent Clemenson.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start by thanking our tech team, our technology team, who is behind the camera. A lot of work went into operationalizing a full livestream. We were dabbling in August and September as we came back together and as we enter the year and see that this is a long-term reality. A lot of work went into making sure that the sound does what the sound should do and the livestream does what the livestream should do. So I want to thank the tech team there, Mr. Ferraro as well, for bringing the board meeting live to our community. It runs over YouTube, which is not a subscription-based platform, which I think was maybe an obstacle for people to participate in. They didn't want to get a Facebook account set up, or they didn't have one, or they just weren't comfortable with social media. So YouTube is an open source, youtube.com. Go to the Hampton Bay's page by typing in HamptonBayUFSD, and you can access the livestream or the recordings. A link is on our website as well, and our marquee says, "Check the website for livestream instructions." So lots of ways for the community to get engaged and stay connected to us. As we go through the presentation tonight, you can see it on the back here behind me, but it's also in your packet. Our community watching. behind me, but it's also in your packet. Our community watching is, can see that trained, that on the screen there as well. I just wanted to give you an update on enrollment. Today's enrollment, actually yesterday's enrollment, is, let me take this off, is 2030 students. So that's down from the 2044 students that we had at our September board meeting. It always takes a few weeks in every school district to see, identify who is coming back. Sometimes records requests from the new school for a child, it takes a little while to get to us. But if you compare from February 2020, when we were 2019 students K-12, now we're 2030 K-12, we're just about a half a percent up. So that headline that you see from August there, "Some East End Schools See The Surge In Enrollment," it's a question I get asked the most out in the community. Are you surging? Are you enrolled, have you enrolled so many kids? The answer is no, not right now. But the more detailed answer is, it is more than we thought it was going to be, because our enrollment projections, which had been pretty spot-on or close in previous years, pre-pandemic, we were projected to be just about 2,000. So 30 kids higher than that, it's about a half a percent higher. It's manageable, but we did not see that surge from New York City that some of our neighbors on the East End did. I want to remind us where we are as a community with our phased reopening. Now remember, we called this a responsive and managed opening. We use the analogy of, or the image of walking before we run regularly. From the first morning, we sat in this room on July 31st for our reopening plan. And I can't thank our community and our faculty and our staff enough for the work that they've done to get open and stay open. We had said from the beginning, opening the door is going to be the easy part, keeping the doors open is going to be the challenging part. And the community has been nothing but responsive and cooperative and supportive and innovative, and they've contributed so much to a successful reopening. So I thank our parent groups and our parents and the general community at large, who's been just so extremely supportive of the HB schools. We said that the plan we submitted was the September 8th plan, because by September 9th, it was going to start to evolve, and it sure has. We learn that we can do more things, or we learn that we need to do less things. We step on the gas, we pump the brake, we tweak as we need to go. We live now in Phase 3. Phase 0, you remember, was springtime. We were fully remote. Phase 1 was that first two weeks of school in September, where all of the students, all of the grade levels, were alternating day, 50% capacity. And then into Phase 2, we brought in K to 6 life skills and our self-contained special education every single day, and then our 7 through 12 on the purple-white hybrid schedule. So then as we get to September 29th, we live in Phase 3. Phase 3 is that open-ended existence. How long will we be in Phase 3? We will be in some version of Phase 3 for a long time. Phase 4 is pre-pandemic, right? Everything's back to normal. Pandemic is behind us. There are therapeutics, there are vaccines, there's herd immunity. There's all of those things that make this a thing of the past. We won't get to Phase 4 for some time. Phase 3 is open-ended. So it could be from bringing everybody back to bringing smaller groups back. We'll be engaging our parent groups, board members in the materials that I've shared with you tonight. You'll see that some ideas for increasing the capacity are maybe looking at that. Well firstly, we have fully remote families who may make the decision to come back into school at the first marking period. We'll be canvassing that subgroup of our families in the coming weeks to determine who is coming back, or who intends to come back to in-person instruction. We have remote Mondays that exist for grades 7 through 12. That is, that was really to give everybody, staff and students, the opportunity to get settled into this new year, to do some social, emotional, college and career activities that don't always happen in such a focused way as they do on remote Mondays, and then get our live streaming infrastructure up and running. So that's teachers using all the different platforms you're going to hear about shortly from our senior leaders and the district. So right now, we live in Phase 3. The buildings are, we have about 18% of our kids on remote instruction, K through 12. K through 5, we have dedicated teachers teaching solely remote. 6 through 12, our teacher who is in the front of the classroom is teaching three sets of kids at once. The children who are right in front of him, the children who are on the alternating day at home, and the children who are home 100% of the time. So it's mission control, I think Mr. Ferraro called it earlier. You walk into teachers' classrooms and you see three, four monitors, an iPad, a Chromebook, the teacher walking around, and some really remarkable things are happening under a challenging circumstance. So we'll continue to communicate as we can, use the guidance in our favor. So use the guidance, of course, is appropriate PPE, appropriate social distancing, appropriate barriers, things like that. We're on regular communication on all of our counterparts, whether it's the business officials and facilities directors, it's the special education folks, athletic directors. Everybody is communicating with their colleagues and their state associations to use the guidance in our favor, to bring back as many kids as we can as fast as we can. I would argue also that we have seen success because of the measured, managed opening that we're engaged in right now. So families, it's been a tremendous lift for families to do this, and that is not ever lost on any of us, that we know that this has put families in a juggling situation, whether they're fully remote, or hybrid, or even in person, because dealing with masks at the kitchen table and, you know, getting the willies out at the end of the day, it's been a tremendous lift for families in our community. So that's not lost on us as well. And we have tried to proceed with the mantra that as technology gets frustrating, and technology will frustrate us, if it's 8:30 at night and we're stressing out about submitting the Google assignment and it's not working, and it's just not working, it's just not working, turn it off. Tomorrow, if the assignment's done, we just said we had a technological difficulty. We're all in this together. We're all understand that a lot of folks, staff and families are making a big lift here. So I just want to say that and say thank you. And thank you, of course, to the Board of Education for your agility in managing this plan as well. I want to recognize you all for your service as well. October 19th to 23rd is National School Board Recognition Week, and you all give of yourselves because of the hefty paycheck that school board members make. It's $0. That was a joke. It's $0. It is a community service. It's a public service. Your governance of the organization instills trust in our community, and in turn, the community trusts the school to take care of its kids. It's not a given that we just exist and succeed. A lot of work goes into that, and management and setting the vision, setting the what, and then your team will do the how. You say what for our community, and our job is to do the how. So thank you. And community members, when you see a school board member, thank a school board member in King Cullen, from a socially-distanced distance. It's also National School Principals' Month. October is National School Principals' Month, so thank a principal as well when you see these. Our building leaders live in the world of operationalizing their building and still making sure that the instruction takes place for kids at a high level, and the experience still takes place for kids. I do want to report that an anonymous Instagram site was brought to my attention in the last few weeks, @LIHamptonsConfessions. It's a virtual slam book that we would remember, a terrible slam book that would get passed around. People would write anonymous things. Southampton, East Hampton, our neighboring districts were also made aware of this, and together, we made a report to both Instagram and Google on their platforms to mark this as harassment and bullying. We didn't get any reports of kids who reported bullying and harassment, but we are aware that these dangerous places exist on the internet, and we have to teach that cyber safety to kids as well, because it's not always a safe, great place as much as we're relying on technology right now. Through the pandemic, I want to mention just some community partnerships. We thrive because of our community partnerships. Mr. Shug had mentioned the Patriots pen that Chelo had just finished writing. We continue to partner with our veterans organizations. We hit the magic number 70 in terms of the number of veterans' flag ceremonies that we held prior to the pandemic. They're on pause right now, but on November 9th at 10:00 a.m., just like the class of 2020, got to drive over the bridge, and the 4th graders got to drive around the bus loop, and the 8th graders got to drive around the bus loop, we're going to invite our community's veterans to decorate their car, put an American flag on the window, and come through so that the student buddy at the elementary school can celebrate and thank our veterans. We can't have them inside for the breakfast that we always, that loved for so many years, but we will still have the opportunity to have our veterans drive through so we can wave, smile, and say thank you. The Hampton Bays Fire Department has been very gracious in allowing us to use their substation on Saturday, November 7th, for school pictures. So we have used every last space in our buildings, and the elementary school did not have the place for the photo studio where we could have kids moving in and out. So we did not want parents to miss that. So many may get their holiday cards and put them in their holiday gifts in December. So Life Touch agreed to work at the fire department. The fire department said, whatever you need, we'll work with them to make sure it's done in a socially-distanced way and that their protocols are respected as well. So thank you to the fire department. The Hampton Bays Public Library, Mr. Carlson will likely touch on this, also participated in our Parent Academy series. I want to flag this last bullet for you. The Southampton Business Alliance, which is an alliance of business owners and small businesses in the entire town of Southampton region, donated $6,100 in scholarships for kids going into BOC's career in technical education, specifically plumbing, HVAC, the electrical trades and carpentry. So the SBA, which is run by Executive Director Cheryl Heather, who owns a small business here in town, believes that building the pipeline for kids to have a meaningful career locally is important. And so in order to get into your BOC CTE program, it could be a $250 to $400 expense to get your grounding boots, or to get your toolkit, or whatever it might be to get you started, which is a heavy lift for some kids. We were able to give, so the $6,100 went to 19 students in West Hampton Beach, Hampton Bays, and Southampton. We just act as the conduit for it through the Hampton Bays Education Foundation. Tears in their eyes. I can now stop borrowing my tools from my uncle's tools when he needs them on the job site. I can do this on my own now. A real sense of investment, and the kids understood that. So the Southampton Business Alliance, if you know members, people who are members of that organization, they made a great investment in our students. This week, Mr. Walker will be taking the first step back out onto the field since March 13th, March 12th. We didn't have practice on the 13th. March 12th from 2020, and will be rolling out an off-season conditioning program. Very carefully done. The idea is to go slow, get our kids back out on the fields. Some have kept their health and fitness regimens over the course of the closure, others have not. We want kids to be ready for game play when the season starts, when the winter season starts on January 4th. So we'll push information out about that. It'll be outdoor programming. We still will not be using locker rooms, or changing, or competing, or having contests, but it is an opportunity for kids to get with their coach again, get with their teammates again, get out on the field, and exercise a little bit and do what they love. So it's the first step to remembering what life was like prior to COVID. And then, board members, I will be sending you all your virtual packet for the school board's convention. Not as exciting as sunny Rochester or Syracuse, but your Zoom meetings will be just as productive, covering things from student equity to fiscal management and everything in between. So I'm going to, I have my team with me here tonight, who's going to just offer a quick look across the departments. We took, you heard from the buildings opening up in September. This is the opportunity for the operational departments across the district to just give us a sense of what they're focused on right now. We got the door open. Now what is our focus in order to stay, to stay open? Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Good evening. Last spring, we started the project of auditing our curriculum and seeing what, what were some of the major concepts. We wanted to make sure that we reinforced what was taught remotely, what did we run out of time for because of the unexpected closure. And that planning continued through the summer, and we now have a district-wide curriculum project in which K to 8, and actually K to 12, VLA and math, are now creating a compact curriculum that has focused standards that are based on not only New York State guidance, but some data that we've had from past assessments. And this also includes any other course that results in a Regis exam or an AP exam. We did phenomenally well with our AP exams last year, so our teachers are very well-versed in making sure that they focus on all the major concepts so that students remain to be successful, and we close gaps. We make sure that we do our best to support students despite, you know, challenges that we've been through. In addition to this, we acknowledge that academics is one part of it, but social, emotional learning is absolutely a contributor to success and something that's completely important. And as Mr. Clemmensen has pointed out, that on remote Mondays, and also for our other students that don't experience remote Mondays, that we have SEL and college and career webinars that they can experience throughout this opening so that we address the needs of our students, we address the emotional needs of our students as well as our academic needs. We're rethinking engagement and formative assessment. Everything looks different. It's not just in a classroom. It might be in a phys ed class. It could be in a music class. There's been some wonderful discussions among faculty members and between teachers and administration of making sure that in this new medium, that while we teach, we're assuring that our students are understanding the materials, even if they're not in front of us. And we've invested in some applications that Mr. Ferraro will go into a little bit later on, that have made this a lot more accessible than it's been in the past. We've been able to invest in some meaningful professional development, and a lot of this has come in-house. We have a great system that we've developed. We have very talented faculty and staff here that is almost feeding itself. People are stepping up left and right to say that I can help assist others in what I know, and we've been grateful for that. And that's been a large part of not only our superintendent's conference days, but also our continued professional development throughout the school year that happens after school. It's been a wide range as well. Again, not just academic, but social, emotional learning topics as well have been addressed, and we continue to look at some of our other more challenged learners that might be classified and/or E&amp;L students that might need extra support and some additional interventions on top of what we've, the instruction that we conduct in our classrooms. Our faculty have been phenomenal in supporting each other, as I've said before, and we continue to help them get used to this new medium, especially those that are now live streaming, by, you know, giving them the tools. Again, Mr. Ferraro will go through in a bit, but also giving them the support and just listening and brainstorming as to how can we make this livestream better each day that they go into the classroom. Lastly, in this section here, we acknowledge that our parents are a vital source, now more than ever, especially since March. They've been basically a teacher and/or teacher assistant, every single role that you can think of. They've facilitated throughout their household while their student completes their work outside of the classroom. So what we did is we designed some parent academies to help them get more familiar with the applications that we've invested in. They've been a great success, and we've been able to include our Hampton Bays librarian as well in our last session, and we look forward to continuing this in the future. in the future with a new series. And we've been able to, again, with our talented staff and our well-versed staff, offer this both in English and Spanish. We have an incredible remote and hybrid instructional plan. As Mr. Clemmerson has spoken about, K-5, we have students that are fully remote, and we have dedicated staff towards those students. So we want to thank Mrs. Mancuso, Mrs. McLaren, Mrs. Moran, and Mrs. Van Bokkaidus. Some of them are very new teachers that have really acclimated to this mode of instruction quite well. If you visited these areas where they're instructing students full-time, remote, you would not have even imagined that this could happen, you know, just a few years ago. That we have some really incredible instruction happening throughout all of our classrooms, and especially in these remote settings. And we have our plans, you know, if we ever have to go remote, whether it be short-term or long-term. We're very confident that we've communicated quite well with our faculty and staff about how we can shift on a dime if and when needed, whether that is a day or in the long term. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Ferraro to the mic for our next slide.
Good evening, everyone. Educational Services really has been living in the technology world as of since March, basically. That's the primary function right now. But that all falls into feeding that robust remote and hybrid plan that Mr. Carlson just spoke about. So a few things I wanted to touch on. Some incredible lifts that have occurred since March and especially since the reopening this year. Firstly, when we closed last year, we were at a one-to-one initiative in grades 5 through 12. All right, grades 5 through 12. In the closure, we managed to scamper what we could. We secured some private donation. And I'm happy to say that as of right now, K-12, we are in a full one-to-one. So should we have to run into a remote closure, every student has a school-issued device in hand. And we've really just grown lease and bounds with what we're doing with those devices, happy to say. Between the 700-plus devices we leased this year that are still arriving because demand is so high for them. Also, we've had two very generous donations from the OLA, which is an East End organization. With that, we have to educate our parents, right? We have to educate our parents and our students in what proper conduct looks like. Now we're live streaming also. So what is acceptable to... If you're home, what's acceptable conduct, you know, you being home and also showing the world what your living conditions are. No, not being in bed in pajamas. So just, we're really educating parents on that. So you see there, live-streaming policy commitments from parents and students. We're working with Aristotle, which is our student device management system. And more and more every day, I know I'm finding more utilization for it, Mr. Godfrey as well. Basically, Aristotle is telling us real-time data that we can take and make really smart decisions about how we're educating our kids. For example, today, our peak usage was 1,285 devices simultaneously being used in Hampton Bays, which is incredible when you think about it. That means 1,285 kids were at the same time were using their school-issued device. It's an invaluable tool to become. We're looking at top websites, top applications that are used to see, to inform more decision-making as to what works and what doesn't. You know, we can look at our software that's being used because we're dumping so much resources into it. We want to make sure it's properly being used and exercised. And also instructing our teachers, you know, that your colleagues are using this, and they're having a lot of great results with it. Lastly, for this bullet, Wi-Fi availability. We still have some Wi-Fi hotspots that we are making available to families who are... Who basically can't afford it or can't provide reliable internet access for their students. So those requests are still trickling in very slowly, though. And Mr. Godfrey's also been managing that. So a big thank you to him. Big thank you to the whole tech team, really, because these guys have been working around the clock with some of this stuff. As we switch over to hardware, software, live-stream management to support the pandemic. In March, we went into closure. Teachers were providing asynchronous work. We're now providing live streaming from classrooms, which is an incredible lift for this district. And I think this board should really, you know, understand how great that is for this district. So many of the districts aren't doing that. And all I keep hearing is positive feedback from the teachers about how well they really like it and how the kids really log on. And it's live. It's live, and you know, it's just, it's as close to a real classroom as can be at this time. So huge thanks to that. That's caused a lot of different investments. Mr. Clemmerson mentioned mission control. That's what I've been calling it, though. Teacher with two or three monitors in front of them. Teachers with earpieces we bought them. We bought them Bluetooth headsets so they can walk around the room, not be tied to their laptop or their Chromebook, but they can have some semblance of normalcy while they're instructing their students, both in class and remotely. So just, you know, huge strides there. Webcams in classrooms for classes that might need it if a teacher is remote for some reason. We have webcams in classes where kids can be seen by the teacher remotely. And lastly, if teachers are remote, we're getting students' headsets so they can hear and talk to their teacher in real time. So all this comes with a lot of changes. So we have kids in school. We have kids in school every other day. We have kids who are completely remote. So we want to make sure to accurately take attendance and report that to the state. So we've had to add all kinds of new attendance codes to our student management system as to who's in school, when they should be in school. And, you know, heaven forbid, in the event of contact tracing that has to occur, we know who should be where they should be. So all that stuff has really become at the forefront of what we're doing. Lastly, or two more things. We're kind of building the plane mid-flight at this time, you know. When we went to closure, Google Classroom didn't even articulate with eSchool data, which is our student management system. Now we're starting to see those vendors really kind of work together and integrate and so they can speak to one another better. Teachers were grading things on Google Classroom and then physically manually transposing the grades. Now they're able to seamlessly click a button and it syncs. So we're seeing the thing start to develop, and it's really helping out a lot. Lastly, as Mr. Carlson said, we've invested an incredible amount in the software that our teachers are asking for. When we went to closure, most of the vendors, you know, threw their hands up and said, "Everything's free right now until the end of the school year." Now that we're in the new normal, you know, teachers are saying, "Hey, I use this. I really liked it. Can we purchase this?" a district. So we're seeing less and less spent on physical supplies, but more and more spent on, you know, the virtual supplies. And it's really making teachers kind of rethink how they're delivering instruction. You may have a veteran teacher who's been doing things on handouts for their whole career, and now it's completely a virtual classroom, which is really an incredible feat. Lastly, I'll say this. Thursday night, we're hosting our first Open School Night, which is completely virtual. All the teachers have recorded their welcoming. Our principals have all recorded their welcome statements. So really excited to see that, and I'm looking forward to where this continues to grow. I mean, I think with this pandemic, good things are coming from it, and we're seeing a lot in ed services. Thank you. Mr. Pogana, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Evening, Mr. Clemmerson, Board of Ed. So I just wanted to touch on a few items with respect to the way our Student Services Department is supporting a successful reopening. In particular, two bullets. You'll see them up there. I'll touch on each of the pieces. But the managing the health and safety of staff and students and the instructional component. Can't hear me? Can you hear me now? And providing high-quality support and instruction for students with disabilities. So with respect to the managing the health and safety of staff and students, we've partnered up with CBS. They've been gracious enough to provide a free flu shots for all faculty and staff. And we're breaking that up into essentially what's known as three clinics. One at the elementary school, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. That's going to start next week. And it's going to be from 2:30 to 4:30. So far, we have about 45 or so faculty members that actually have indicated that they're interested. But we're going to get a little bit more flu shots available in the event. We just have walk-ins. So they've been very, very gracious with that. And they helped us out last year, and I think we're going to continue with that partnership. With respect to daily monitoring and the student and staff healthy conditions, I would be remiss if I didn't really start this piece by congratulating the prices teams in each of the buildings as well as the nurses. They have done yeoman's work with respect to doing this. Nobody signed up for this. None of us did. But they have gone above and beyond the call of duty. So I just wanted to formally recognize them and just thank them for their efforts because they... So with the first bullet, there's a COVID-19 daily symptomatic assessment form that I created. It's a Google form where the nurses complete these forms for any students or staff members that present with any type of COVID-like symptoms. That form then gets generated into an Excel spreadsheet and breaks it down more succinctly with respect to... It gets time-stamped. It indicates the type of condition that they have, the type of symptoms that they may have. And it also indicates a return date. So if they went to get a COVID test, it would indicate the COVID test and the negative test that had, they had, or a clearance letter from the doctor indicating that the symptom had nothing to do with COVID and that they're able to come back. So that's very helpful. Our contact tracing log, the COVID-19 tracing log, is extremely important as well because in the event that someone does test positive for COVID-19, the Department of Health will come in and really conduct the contact tracing. They will then ask us, "Okay, what documentation have you kept in order for us to help us in this vein?" So that contact tracing form or log that we have will in fact do that. So it kind of streamlines the process and makes it more efficient. So we're happy with that. And I'm sure the Department of Health was as well. That being said, the Department of Health, New York State Department of Health and the Suffolk County Department of Health, their guidance is always evolving. It's always changing. Things change here or there, and we get updated guidance. So these documents that we've created in-house are living documents. So if we need to change them, we would, and we will. We actually were part... Mr. Clemmerson, myself, and Margaret McDonald were part of a webinar today. And again, some information will have to be updated in our documents, which we'll go. I know that every day, I believe it's at 4 o'clock, Mr. Clemmerson, we have to report to the state, or Mr. Clemmerson's been doing that, reporting to the state our numbers. And specific questions are asked regarding that. So the school reporting dashboard is a vital piece with that. I've also been charged with managing the staff and student accommodations with respect to any students who... or staff members who present with COVID-19 comorbidities. So that can include anything from someone who's diagnosed with cancer, someone who's high-risk, has a high-risk pregnancy. I work very closely with the staff member if they give consent to their physician and then our physician in determining the best accommodations for that particular faculty member in order for them to be safe and ultimately for the students to be safe as well. With respect to providing high-quality instruction and support for our students with disabilities, I have researched and continue to research daily. I work with my association district-wide, county-wide, and both counties, Nassau and Suffolk County, with respect to best practices for remote instruction. Students with disabilities require very highly structured type of instruction and services. That being said, there are some gains that have been made out there with respect to remote instruction, and we're moving in that direction. And anything that is viable, we're utilizing. Case in point, there's some... Lyndemood Bell is a reading intervention that we incorporate in the district. There's some new, I guess, upgrades, for lack of a better word, with respect to the way in which that type of strategy and intervention can be incorporated remotely because it's difficult to do sometimes. So we're doing that as well as we're offering any other type of either computerized equipment that might help them, applications on an iPad, on their Chromebook, anything that they need that will help them to better access instruction is what we're providing. And we're really not looking too deep into that. If it's something that's viable, we're offering it. And that's a case-by-case basis. And then the CSC would make a formal recommendation with respect to that. Some online resources I talked about. Some additional tools that we've created this year in particular are the progress monitoring tool that I've created for all our special education teachers. This tool in particular focuses not only on the IEP goals of students, but on interventions that are being provided for students with disabilities above and beyond their goals. So you may have a student who, for example, is getting Lyndemood Bell. I'll use that as an example. So the Lyndemood Bell intervention is in place. There would be baseline data that would be collected and then benchmarking that would be done every six to eight weeks to determine if, in fact, that that's working. So this progress monitoring tool kind of keeps it in one place as opposed to different locations with respect to documenting and recording this information. So it's tied into the IEP goal, which it always should be anyway. So I like it on one form. We have a substantial regression statement form. It's a tracking form that we keep. We've been using that for years with respect to our extended school year program. But we've kind of incorporated that now into our school year as well because that, in conjunction with the progress monitoring tool, will give us the data points that we need to, again, on a case-by-case basis, determine if students need compensatory services. So that's where we're at. That's like a little snapshot of what we're doing in Student Services. And with that, I pass it to Mr. Larry Luce.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. As is typically the case in the fall, the business office has been busy with the closing of the books of last year as well as the audit. Coming out of last year, very pleased to report that we have substantial savings from last year. Normally, we'd have a savings every year of a couple hundred thousand dollars or so. Due to COVID and the unfortunate cancellation of many of our activities in the spring, we're ending the 2019-20 school year with about $3.6 million unspent and in savings, either from revenue that we didn't expect, a little bit of revenue that came in. We didn't expect... Mostly from savings from programs that just didn't run in in April, May, and June. That sets us up well because of what I've been mentioning to you in the last two board meetings. Looking at this year, we are seeing the state hold back on aid, and we expect that holdback to become a cut of about 20% of our state aid, or roughly $1.2 million. We're going to need that savings to help fill that cut if it happens the way we think it's going to. There may be some belief from the federal government that that's being talked about all the time in Washington. I'm not really sure where it's going to go, but hopefully it comes. And what's happening day to day, and what we've heard some of my colleagues talk about, is the expenses that we're incurring beyond what we budgeted for because of COVID this year. Extra sections of classes that had to be run in order to space students out. We run extra sections. We need extra people to teach them. Cleaning supplies, PPE supplies. Lots of different things have just changed our budget in ways that we didn't see in March and April and even May of last year. So carrying money over from last year and having that in reserve is going to be key as we go through this year and start to move into the future. As we forecast long range, what I'm being told by those in Albany is that we can expect a recessionary-type period and probably some cutbacks in aid going forward for the next couple of years. What we've heard as a business official is that our aid may very well look like it did in, say, 2011 and '12 when we were getting about $4.4 million worth of aid. Right now, we're getting a little bit over $6. So we're looking at a cut of almost $2 million or a reduction of almost $2 million. If that plays out... If that plays out, then next year and possibly even the following year, we may be looking at budget shortfalls, or we may have to be turning to those reserves to carry us through if we don't want to change programs or we can't change programs or we can't cut certain things. And as I'm also hearing, and I'll share with you, I'm sure you've probably seen it, some things, the costs are starting to rise, like ERS. This, this little article here in, in the Board News talks about how ERS is anticipated to increase 1.6% for next year. TRS will probably do a similar thing, and so will a lot of insurance costs that we incur. So our revenue is likely to be constricted, our expenses are going up, and we're just going to have to manage our way through it, but we're in good shape to do that because we've saved, we've reserved, we're prepared, we can, we can get through, okay? It's going to work out. What I'm suggesting to you tonight for that 3.6 million is to place it into the Capital Reserve. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because, three things. First of all, we can borrow from the Capital Reserve. If, if COVID goes on and there's, there's extreme hardship because of it, we can reach into that and, and get through. Secondly, we talked about last February, the fact that there was a problem with the elementary school roof, that problem was patched and repaired, but we said we need to address it. And we didn't do a bond because we don't want to have to do that, but if things work out and this money is, is still here in two years and we have it available to us, it's time to address that roof, so we'll be there for that. And thirdly, if we move forward in a, in a few years, and again, we don't have to use this, then it's there to help us with our debt and reducing our debt and bringing that down. So three good reasons why to go to Capital Reserve, and I'm recommending that tonight. The other thing is, tonight is setting our tax levy. We talked back in May that our tax levy would be $48.3 million. That's $72,000 less in the tax cap, we're under the cap, and I see no reason for us to change that. I feel that that was appropriate when we set up the budget back in May. I feel that we reserved well, and we can manage our way through this, and I feel that it is appropriate to keep the levy we told the voters back in May. I'm recommending we, we move forward with that levy. And then last, and on a much lighter note than the finances, I just want to bring to the board's attention something that was a real feel-good thing for me. I was approached by the social workers in the three schools, asking if they could do a fundraiser to, to generate some funds to use for various different things, but primarily Katie's Closet. And I had to tell them no because you can't sell anything, there's money changing hands, you can't do anything because services, you can't get close to these, social distancing. So they finally came back and they said, well, we got a great idea. J. Crew will give 20% of what anyone spends for two weeks at the factory store to the school. So they came up with this as a, a way to help some clothes in Katie's Closet and help students. So just wanted to make you aware that they are going to move forward with this with your okay, and hopefully it'll bring in some, some nice money and some nice clothes for Katie's Closet. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
I just have a couple, a couple more bullet points to wrap up. I'm a large tall, if you want to shop at J. Crew for me to spend any of that money.
Mine for Christmas. Thank you, sir.
Looking into, looking over at facilities, Mr. McElrath is underway with our annual review of asbestos, the annual inspection that takes place to make sure that any asbestos that does still exist on the campuses, and they do in schools all across America, is still in the state that it needs to be in, so it's safe and not a concern. Every five years, we have to conduct lead in waters, in, lead in water testing. We've only had to do it once, five years ago was the law, so that's scheduled for next week to take place after school hours, to take samplings from all of the places where you can get water in, on all campuses. Cleaning and sanitation continue at a real high level, the buildings look great, and the custodial team does not stop moving. We will be moving to assigned parking spots on the Ponquod campus to, to ease congestion in certain lots. It does become a safety hazard, so we wanted to get the year up and running before we started assigning numbers to people and, and get, one change at a time. You know, people like where they park, so, but we need to, we need to relieve some of the pressure and use some of the big lot in the back so that it's a little bit safer on, on the Ponquod campus. In transportation world, our buses are currently running below capacity. Some buses have as few as 10 kids on them, up to 30 kids, those are the big, they're called pusher buses, they have the flat nose. They're still running below capacity. That could change when the weather changes, but for now, that's been a good thing that's been able, we've been able to preserve social distancing. Social distancing on buses, remember, is a goal, it's not a guarantee. Everyone's where, everyone wears a mask, there's cleaning and sanitizing that takes place, social distancing is ideal, but not, not a guarantee that guidance provides for in New York State. The route, the routes are very tightly scheduled, there's no additional equipment to put on the runs, and what we're, what we're seeing is that shoulder month traffic is higher than in years past because folks haven't gone home after Labor Day. And so traffic, which we kind of, you know, grinned and bared it for the first month until folks really went home after Columbus Day, they're not going home. So the buses are, there is traffic in the morning that could be a snarl for the buses arriving. And then, as I mentioned earlier in the report, Mr. Walker's, he's already working out, see, he's working out over there. He's ready to get back on the field too with his kids. So athletic season is set to begin on the 4th of January, and we're really excited to get our conditioning program up and running for next week. I'll answer any questions on the agenda as we go through the consent. Or any general questions on the report right now? Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for your reports. We will now do a consent agenda for finance and operations, items 4A to 4E. Anybody have a question or a comment? All right. I call for a motion. Second? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. We're now going to address items 5A, the petty cash authorization. Anybody have a comment on that or a question?
We simply changed a staff member who teaches in the life skills program, so just had to change the name out.
Thank you. I call for a motion.
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Student Services, we will address item 6A. Anybody have comment or a question on that? Therefore, I call for a motion for 6A.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Now we're doing, are we up to seven?
Seven.
Okay. I now call for a motion to approve items 7A through 7H. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, we will do a consent for the Board of Education, agenda, items 8A through 8E. Anybody have any questions or comments? I call for a motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Any new business? Anything else to bring up?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will have public comment for anyone to address the Board of Education on matters of their interest. Please identify yourself and address for the record. Please keep the questions and comments to a reasonable timeframe so that all can be heard. Please understand that if questions cannot be answered tonight, we will respond in writing within one week.
Nothing in the live stream.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other business for us to consider tonight?
No.
Okay, hearing nothing, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, tech team.
Thank you very much.